Okay, it's ten o'clock, someone called me this morning. We'll be going to get ready here in the morning.
I broke calls all the way on this. Same guy from here, Parkman, put it here.
We're gonna move down to item number three to recognize this. Once again, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. And item number four should be new business.
Okay, I have something things. Put an ad in the paper, I forgot the summer, I needed one there in the front. So, since we're picking up trash in the community, if any of the, anyone wants to donate heavy-duty trash bags, because they are filling up several bags when they go out. I did ask them to be dropped off at District Two, and that way Aaron can come by when he picks up the picker rappers and the vest that they wear. So that way they can have the trash bags when they get here. Also, we have, I got something from Del France. On a safety meeting, which is the twelfth and thirteenth of October, I printed off. They also said to let your sheriff know, I did get that email to Tim, so I will give it to Aaron. So I plan on going to this on the twelfth and the thirteenth. If anyone else wants to go, it isn't overnight, it doesn't start till one o'clock on Thursday. So this is something that, as of September fifteenth, we're OSHA compliant. So they'll be coming around next Monday and Tuesday to walk the barns and the courthouse and apparently the jail.
Are they going to the jail? I thought they were.
No.
Last I heard, they weren't.
The email I got is let your sheriff know, so I'm...
Here he comes, so when he gets in here.
He's got, he's got the email.
He does?
Yes, he does, I sent it to him. Let's see, I've got anything else. I think that's it.
Here comes the sheriff, he can give us a... Right on time, Tim.
It's good.
We're in, you're up.
Well, that's good. Hey, we got fifty inmates. Everything at the jail's running pretty smoothly. We've got, um... We've had an increase in our small thefts this last couple of weeks. Continuing to have them, from the larceny of animals to lawnmowers. Other than that, everything's running pretty smooth. We're losing one deputy. And, um...
Was this another one last week?
No, well, that's the same way. I'm just, we are for sure losing him. Hospital having part-time. Depending on budget issues, we'll depend on if we're able to replace him or not. Call volume is still extremely high. We're currently working with OLEX, which is our telecommunications system that allows us to run criminal histories, driver's license tanks. Because of staffing issues in the jail, they're called this morning telling us we have to get it fixed or they're going to pull our computer. We can, we can't afford to lose that computer. If we lose it, we never get it back. So myself and Katrina's working this morning on trying to figure out ways to fix that problem. It's been an ongoing problem for several years, but OLEX is at the point now where they're talking about removing the terminal from our system. Phone call came at seven thirty this morning. So, other than that, everything is, um, everything's going just fine.
Tim, I brought up that email I sent you Saturday.
Okay, yeah.
On that meeting. So, I'm not telling them I would be gone.
I will probably go as well. We, um, I will tell you, we picked up, I do want folks to know, we picked up approximately nine miles of trash last week.
That's with the inmates.
That's with the inmates. Nine miles of trash, so you double that, eighteen, that's, because you gotta go down on both sides of the road. We got almost twenty-six bags of trash, fifty-five gallon bags full. And it's, you know, we did Killen Road and we did Whitefield. We went all the way to county line one way, all the way through Whitefield, the intersection, all the way through, and went all the way to the bridge both ways. Cleveland Acres the other way.
I did tell them that we put an ad in the paper for this week, anybody who wants to donate trash bags. So we need to trash bags trained to burn too. Since Aaron comes down there and gets water, gets the picker ruffs and then the vest that he uses for safety. So, we'll get that going.
We've, um, it's, hopefully Jeremy Warren has sent me a message. He has got a trailer, a trash trailer. It's got sides on it and different things. It needs a floor and stuff in it. I'm gonna reach back out to Jeremy this week, but he acted like he would donate that to the county, get it fixed and get it donated. So I'll reach back out this week to Jeremy and see if we can get that donated. We're also, what we're doing is we're separating trash and we're saving any scrap metal, we're saving any aluminum, saving all that together. You know, our plan would be is that could help us, you know, buy oranges in the jail, that can help us buy mats, you know, utilize that money back toward the jail. So we are, we are saving all that. Me and Aaron has talked about it. Probably gonna go buy another weed eater. I think we've got two, maybe three, but try to have four weed eaters. And at the end of October, after we have a good freeze, have them go out and start weed eating around every stop sign and get all that grass knocked down around stop signs and check. If stop signs need to be replaced, then get to the respective commissioner in that district so we can get those signs replaced. But, that's what, that's what we have going with the inmate work for these last couple of weeks.
Well, I'll thank you, Dan. Is there any more new business before we move on?
What did he say about the, is the jail going to be in the inspection?
Yes. That was my understanding, that yes, it will be.
Okay.
Which inspection?
Well, the sheriff's.
She said she emailed you.
I gave you that email Saturday night.
This right, this right here's what I got, the safety board.
Twenty-third and twenty-fourth, they're coming down to go through all the county barns, the courthouse, uh, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, I'm sorry. They're going through county barns, the courthouse, and they added the jail to it, Tim. I just thought she knew that.
I did not know that.
You do, well...
I do now, though.
You do now. So, you, I've been making a few provisions at our county corner, District Three, you know, straightening up some obvious things.
She said the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth? I will be calling the twenty-fifth for a doctor's appointment, but Katrina...
I did ask Aaron if he would walk each barn, the courthouse, in the jail. That way he will have notes and then we'll have our notes and that way we can all work together.
Is there a list of what we need to be looking for that we can start trying to fix before they come in? I mean, if there's, is there something, guidelines that we need to go by?
That they're supposed, this first walkthrough is gonna tell us everything we need to know.
Okay, so there's no, this first walkthrough, there's no guidelines, sir?
It's freebie.
It's a freebie.
It's a freebie. It's a freebie, man. But the way I look at it, the more that you get fixed before they get here, the less they would write, you know, the second write-up would be, they wouldn't have as much to write up. But we're working on our county barn. And I, I know all three county barns are working towards it.
I do wanna thank Dunk Country. We took eleven prisoners to VOC last week. And with the eleven that we took, we utilized the van that they have, a used van that they have. We're gonna, I've got the VIN numbers and stuff. We're gonna try to get that on the agenda this week, or for next week's meeting, to get those two big vans surplus, so we can get those to an auction, so we can look at possibly buying a fifteen pasture van. Because the vans we have now, they're good to go from here to court, but if you start to try to get to Oklahoma City, they don't go over forty-five mile an hour. That's just, they don't, they don't go.
Have you checked the Cowboys out here to see when they're gonna have another auction?
Yeah, we have, and their vans, um...
Have you checked when the next auction was gonna be?
They just had two, I mean, it's had, they had one...
They just had one, but...
Yeah, they don't, here's what we have with Cowboys that we've checked on. The big vans that they have, the, the bigger ones are fine. That's what we've got.
What's on top of them, the big ones?
The fifteen pasture vans, like, like pasture vans, they don't sell those very often, and when they sell them, they said they're not worth buying. That they're, they're usually pretty much wore smooth out.
Okay.
Um, I've talked to Charlotte several times. And that's just, that's where we're at on that. We've actually talked to the mechanics, the last sale they had. But the, the minivan that they had would only sit six people because they have the heating cap.
A minivan would be out, so, I thought you said...
Anyways, we, we have been checking on that.
Is there any more new business?
Return to the courthouse. I've talked to Martin Vergans and Lance Calhoun. They did suspend the ceilings. They're gonna give us a price on materials and insulation and labor to replace those ceiling tiles in the courtroom up there after we do the air-conditioning project and also in the offices to the east of courtroom. I've asked them to give us a price of materials, insulation, labor in, and they give us one with just the labor. And both of them agreed to do that, and I'm waiting to get back from them. There's, uh, in the courtroom, there's fourteen hundred and seventy square feet and there's seven hundred square feet of offices. I met with Matt Friday and we went up into ceiling of the courtroom and looked at all over. What I was anticipating is we'd rent a couple, two or three roll-around scaffolds and try to use county and volunteer labor to rack out the old ceilings that are up there, take that all down. That'll access, let Matt get up there and put all the ductwork in and hang all the units and everything that he's gonna need to put up there. He's recommending to go with heat pump units. He said they're quieter and they're more efficient and it'll get rid of the gas fumes and eliminate the problems going all the way across over the hot gas line more opportunity. So, that looks like it's probably gonna be the best deal. He's estimating a material cost of sixteen thousand. We're planning on trying to get that done, just so that all the commissioners know we're gonna need to rely on us, we all for some help to get these things racked out, you know, get the ceiling down and get all that furniture moved around and stuff when it comes time to do it. And, uh, and also provide the scaffolding.
I believe we have one set of scaffolding. The county already has it, I'm pretty sure.
We'll be okay.
I know we've had one, I wore mine good, but it was yellow. But if we need more, we, I think we can go, go to St. Edgar Home Center and get them, but I do believe we have one and I do believe it has wheels on it.
So, it looks like that we're getting the central heating area in the courtroom and the east offices on third floor is, or second floor is something that's probably gonna be achievable. I've still gotta get with Donnie about rerouting electrical. We've gotta come up with some lighting. As he said, she was working on that, so I hadn't found out about that, but... The, on the third floor, in the new area that's now being caused, called the depository for books and records, we need to purchase four windows for up there, a door, to finish that room out before we start storage in. And the door's gotta be ADA compliant, it's gotta be a panic door, kinda like the door right here on the west end where you hit that bar and exit any time that you go, only enter if you have a key. And that door is thirteen hundred and fifteen dollars and the windows are roughly fifteen hundred dollars a piece. Quote that we have from the window companies to come and replace all the windows, we're probably only gonna ask them to replace four, and I don't know how easy that's, hopefully for them to come in here and do it, but...
I've already talked to him, that won't be a problem.
Okay, good. So we're looking at expenditure there, it's seventy-three hundred. Matt said that he thinks the equipment and all the ductwork and everything is gonna run about sixteen thousand up there, so we should have funds gathered up already through donations to pay for all of this. There's a big push to move forward on the getting the depository room finished so that people can get moved in it. And, uh, so just so that we, whatever you guys wanna decide on, get your thoughts together and agree on whether to just go ahead and do it or not. So we need to, we need to plan on that and deciding things gotta be on the agenda, but we just need to...
As far as the depository, I just had Sandra, she is, Sandra checks every week on getting the shelving, and right now they're not available.
But we do have filing cabinets here.
But if we can get the shelving, we can get started, because if they don't have them, we can't get...
Before anything goes in there, because there's gonna be cutting and welding to put the door jamb in, fix all that back. And then we got one window to tape that's been ripped up that has the flu in it right now.
That's all there.
Source that, that needs to come out and the window put back in. And that'll put the east side of the door to the north corner.
Did y'all talk about that in the last meeting you had, Sandra?
On this?
No, on the...
Court hearing.
Yeah, on court, the group meeting, the court hearing.
This is just stuff that I've been accomplishing past. So we're gonna, uh, if you guys are thinking that's okay with you, we're gonna start moving forward, try to get that done.
When was, when's gotta be a good time to do this?
Well, I'm thinking that Matt said some, October, November. And, uh, and I talked to Brian about it, he's gonna be gone. He said, but that doesn't matter, he said, whatever you guys need to do, he said I can push things forward, prolong things, but still, it's an opportunity.
How long's it gonna take?
I think it'll take Matt, uh, four days. It's gonna take two days to rack it out, and then Matt, four days. I, I just allow two weeks. Because you still gotta get electrical wiring in there, it's pretty extensive. And then we've got to build a platform, won't rely on rock for that, to hold the compressors that'll be sitting out there on the fire escape. And make it mounted there.
And also, Ann, where Karen has her files, she, we cleaned them out quite a bit. We're gonna move her out, once we get that cell empty, we'll need you to come in when we get scheduled and go ahead and get that all cut out, so that room can be...
Just let them know.
So we're kind of at a point on that. We've gotta make a little bit more room to get hers moved out. And she's got shelves in there, which is gonna help co-lock, put her boxes down on.
We got all of ours out, and I think that's ready for Judge Henderson.
Judge Henderson, yes.
Everybody's worked good and tried to get the storage areas cleaned out of the old jail up there. It's a, being cramped for room is difficult because we don't really have a big area that we can go. But once this, that one area is finished up there, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how it's gonna be divided up yet, but, uh, that's gonna open up one area there too. Makes one, we'll get the rest of the entire floor finished.
Okay, any more?
Uh, I spoke with a couple FEMA representatives last week. Kind of the way that I had mentioned in the last commissioners' meeting, all the resources have been pushed towards Houston, well, that also included a lot of monetary resources as well. And so they told me to be sure and let you guys know, right now, that we're, they said you're still gonna get your money, but it's gonna take a while, because everything they have is going into the Houston area and Florida. And it's just gonna take a while. They actually, the same group of people that come in and spoke with all of us are gone. They're, they're down in Texas and Florida right now. And they actually had to bring in a different group of people to help work our issues, and they had to come in from Tennessee and, and work our area. So that's gonna take a little bit. The twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of this month, the Department of Labor, the walkthrough is gonna happen. They're gonna hit the courthouse, District Two barn in one day, and then we're gonna hit District One and Three the next day and do the walkthroughs. We wanna be sure that, like your guys, your secretaries or whoever you guys have out there, be sure that they're ready to take notes on everything. I'll be taking notes too, about recommendations that they're saying, hey, we gotta, gotta fix this, gotta fix that. He's gonna be coming in, it's gonna be an all-day deal. So, just a heads up on that deal, and that's gonna include, on the courthouse, I've gotta touch base with every, um, every department head and let them know that that's gonna happen, because they'll need to be taking notes as well on what they're recommending for their specific offices. I don't know if the sheriff hit it or not, but with our work crews going out and me running them and going through and picking up trash and everything, we kinda hit on it last week. I'm asking that the commissioners, uh, either, we either ask for donations or the commissioners start supplying trash bags for us.
Talking about that.
Okay, all right.
It's gonna be in the paper this week for donations.
Okay, okay, all right, sorry, I came, I came in late, I apologize.
That's fine, and it's gonna, they're gonna bring it down to District Two, because you come down there to pick the others up.
Okay, all right, perfect.
We'll see, we'll see what we get donated, if not, we'll come up with some trash bags.
Okay, all right.
Aaron, how many days did you work, uh, your crews to get that man in my house?
Uh, we worked two days to get that done. We were humped up and going.
First day was about four hours, second day was about six.
Yep.
So about ten hours.
Yep.
And how many did, three?
Took three one day for the next.
Seven.
Yep.
So about seven man hours.
Yep.
That's pretty good, Aaron, nine miles.
Yeah, we, we were humped up and getting it.
Pretty good, yeah.
I don't know if y'all seen it, what we did is, Aaron would park his truck and we took the sheriff's office side-by-side out, that way they could throw, load the trash up in the side-by-side and basically utilized it to watch them, to go back and forth to make sure that they were, they were doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Aaron, are they having a lunch or taking a lunch or...
Um, if it's not, well, the first day that we went out and did it, Norma Prater?
Norma Prater.
Uh, she, we got out in front of her house and she saw us all out working and she's got the old-time diner there in Kyoto and she actually called in lunch for us.
Okay.
Nora, sorry. And she actually, yeah, she actually called in lunch for us and we stopped and grabbed lunch, uh, and, and she got us lunch that day. The next day, um, we didn't have an opportunity and I just bought them lunch out of my pocket, uh, out there at the, at Whitefield, we went to the gas station there and I bought them lunch out of my pocket. It's because they were humped up and working so well and I didn't mind doing that for them, so... Uh, what we'll probably start in doing is I'm gonna make them start packing the lunch and putting it in, because I'm bringing my cooler and I'm gonna make them start fixing sandwiches and from the...
Ask them what they need to do then.
Yeah.
We explained to them they need to start taking sandwiches.
Yeah.
Because we have sandwiches and chips, they can take a sack lunch and eat it while they're out there.
Do we need additional vests? Additional vests?
Yeah, I am utilizing y'all's vests right now.
Yeah, I mentioned that earlier.
Okay.
The vests and then the picker upper things that you're using.
Um, one thing that I'm, I'm gonna ask in addition is that, like, at least once a week, I'm able to get a case of water. Uh, maybe from each barn, get, grab one of those cases of water that, because these guys are running through a lot of water, uh, doing that. I don't, I've got my cooler out there, don't mind using my cooler and we've got an ice machine at the sheriff's office or at the jail that we're utilizing, but, um, if I can grab a case of water from each barn per week to do that.
I guess with the new, with the new business, we'll move on to item number five, approved commissioners proceedings from previous meeting. I think we've all had a chance to look at it, the emotional item number five. Yes. Okay, item number six will be approved blanket POs. We have one for twelve thousand dollars to Stigler Stone. We have one for fifteen hundred dollars to Performance Foods. And then we have one for a thousand dollars to Fleet Shore. And those are the three blanket POs for this week.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Yes.
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 Okay, moving on to item number seven. It will be discussing Twitter hiring James Orkison as counsel in reference to case C I V dash zero five dash four oh six. Sandra, what case is that?
This is the command.
The command case?
Yes, I'm gonna check into.
Well... I've... I guess what I'm saying is, what do you want him to check into?
To see what, what he can, so what we can do to kind of operate some of the interest.
See if he can negotiate a reduction in the, uh, the balance of what's due on litigation.
Well, if, uh... You know, after talking with Roger and auditors and everyone, I've explained to Rick and a few people, you know, how we could possibly just pay it off tomorrow. Not pay it off, but we...
If they would want me.
They have no choice to let us pay it off. Now, they may, you may negotiate, he may negotiate and knock the price down, but as far as paying this debt off, what we've all been through, you know, we had ten years to pay it off and it goes into a sinking fund off Avalon Tax. And that's what we'll decide tomorrow. Do we wanna ask everybody for a dollar this year and a dollar next year or two, or two dollars this year and just pay it off? I mean, that's basically what it's gonna boil down to. Do you wanna give, you wanna pay a dollar on it this year or two dollars on it this year?
What do you have your, uh, you have, how much is it gonna cost to pay it off?
I will have that tomorrow in the budget meeting. Because to get this on that, it has to be paid through the Avalon Tax. I will have those numbers tomorrow when we set the budget, because that's when you set it on the Avalon Tax. When you set the budget through Kerry, Kerry will come up the amount of meals that it would take to pay it off, and that's the process you go through to pay this debt.
Isn't it already on the Avalon Tax?
It is. But in the, I don't wanna throw anybody on the bus or make any excuses, but y'all know who's in charge then. He skipped three years paying for it.
It was set up on ten years.
It was set up on ten years, it was set up on the ten-year payment.
When the first four years weren't paid?
Right, that is correct, Randy. So my point is, we, we can either...
I understand what you're saying, Paul, but I think we owe it to the, to the taxpayers, that we should try to negotiate a settlement with them and see if we can move forward on that. If we can get that, it's, I think I'm correct in saying that it's over ninety thousand dollars?
I think it's ninety-four, but I, it's somewhere in that area.
So if we could get, uh, a thirty or forty thousand dollar reduction off that, we owe it to the taxpayers to try and attempt to do that. And all it's gonna take is three signatures, the three commissioners to, uh, ask Mr. Orkison to proceed with this. You've got the letter right there in front of you. And, uh, and that would be saving the taxpayer his money and the Avalon Tax, and basically, where did it go for the first four years if it was put on there?
That's what I said. To get it started, the chairman at the time would have to got with Kerry Patton and Roger Ballard and, and put it on the Avalon Tax. It never, that one particular person would not do that.
So it was just never placed on?
It was just never placed on there, to my knowledge, and that's what I'm telling you, that's what I've talked to Rick about several times. Tomorrow, we need to, and I agree with you, this is not a bad idea, Randy. I'm, I'm not knocking this idea, nothing whatsoever. But I'm saying tomorrow, as a board of county commissioners, we need to decide if we're gonna prolong it the whole ten years or we just gonna pay it off. Because I'm like you, if we can save thirty thousand dollars, we definitely need to.
So should we table this until after tomorrow's meeting?
No, I don't think, I think we can go on with it. I, I guess my only question is, what's he gonna charge us?
Well, what he, what he's gonna have to do is he's gonna have to look at the paperwork. And I've got paperwork at the office, I've already made a copy. He will oversee and look at it and then he will be able to give us an average of how much it costs.
Yeah, if he can save us some money, I'm all for it. I mean, I'm like Randy, I mean, we owe it, we need to handle people's money wisely, but... You know, I, I didn't wanna pay him ten thousand, save nine thousand, but I don't know what he's gonna charge.
He, he can give us an estimate when he looks at it, just wanted to see.
He's a very fair person, you've, you've...
He is. He's a, he's a super guy.
Plus, he wanted the attorneys on the case?
No, we went and, we pursued him after the fact. Well, no, it was on the jail, we pursued him. But this is in his line of scope of work. I have no problem with getting him to do it.
Thing is, Paul, is that if you give him the opportunity to do it and saves taxpayers some money, uh, gives us the opportunity to pay it off at an earlier date, there's nothing saying that we're not, we're not going into default or anything by not doing it tomorrow.
I'm not, I have no problem, I have...
A year from now and still have any time to do it. We're not up against the rail by setting a deadline for tomorrow.
Tomorrow, we, if, if we wanted to, not saying we will, tomorrow, we would have an option of paying this thing off in one year if we so choose to.
Well, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to...
I have no problem with that.
...score that and, and see if we can, we may not could do anything, but their obligation's not gonna be any greater.
It's on the floor, somebody wants to make a motion, I have no... It's on the floor, somebody wants to make a motion, I have no problem with it.
And he might be able to look at the paperwork and be able to tell us when they have it, and save time.
Make a motion, I have no problem.
I make a motion.
Sandra makes a motion, I'll second, Clark seconded it. I would just like to know kinda what it's charged by.
And then he will get with his, uh, citizen, I love him, like everyone else.
Sandra Sacre?
Yes.
Parker Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Item number eight will be discussed, consider resolution for disposing of equipment for courthouse. And the first item will be a H speed, this jet six five six C has serial numbers.
It's all a bunch of antiquated equipment?
It, it's, it's, it's down there in the basement, if someone wants to go look at it, it's hardly worth calling off, but-
Like, when you go out of the, uh, elevator, it's just right in front of you, over on the other side for the benches?
If anybody wants to look at it, feel free to go to the basement. You have a magic color twenty four hundred. You have a Canon, Canon image class, MS sixty five sixty. You have the same thing for runner twenty one oh five. Not to see it, but everybody says pro, you have a cam- image runner, another one of those, and then you have, Epson something colored.
It's a printer.
It's a printer. But anyway, if anybody has any questions about it, it's in the basement, you're more than welcome to go look at it, it's obsolete. Non-functional, so I'm gonna make a motion on item number eight.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Sandra Sacre?
Yes.
Yes.
Sandra, those are the big printers on the, just outside of the elevator?
Yes, and you'll find some small ones there also.
There's several things down there.
Uh, also, when y'all get ready to do that, if you let me know the day ahead, I'd like to come and, um, show you some other stuff that you can also take.
Okay, it'll be Friday.
Put on inventory.
Okay, it'll be Friday.
I guess.
You need a trailer or something?
Well, I use the sheriff's office trailer. Yeah, it's usually big enough for what we have, so, thank you. Karen, I'll need a copy, I'll need a copy of that resolution like I did last time, that way I can have the transfer station sign off on disposal.
Item number eight. Okay, moving on to item number nine, discussing, discuss, consider signing resolutions for platinum healthcare for drug testing seventeen eighteen, just the basic.
Do we not go out for bids on drug testing and other?
Well, I don't, you could go out for bids, but I, we do not exceed the fifteen thousand dollar limit. Now, if y'all wanna, if y'all so choose to wanna go out for bids, that's fine. I mean, we, we spend probably eight, nine hundred dollars a year in District Three, and I figure y'all are about the same. I mean, we probably spend three thousand dollars a year, and that doesn't come out of gen-, that comes out of I O A T, so. I'm, I'm okay with using platinum, but if you and Clark wanna go out for bids, we can.
I didn't know if y'all have ever done that before, we might look into it next year.
I have a question on your drug testing, uh, what's the policies on when you do that, you do it just as people apply for a job?
Well, the ones at the county barns, you have C D L drivers.
Right.
That are mandated, and, and then it's just random.
Pre-hire and then random.
Yeah, pre-hire then random, but we have a policy if you wanna.
Okay, on, I, I do, uh, there's one thing that we need to actually implement on that, is anytime an accident occurs?
Well, I think it's in our policy.
Okay.
Anytime a C D L driver has an accident, it, it's a, he has to be drug tested, or he or she has to be drug tested.
Right.
I mean, that's-
And it doesn't necessarily, it's not just the C D L guys, even the guys who are just any county employee.
Any county, any county.
Right.
If it's an injury accident, right?
Well, it, well, it didn't even have to be, it didn't even have to be an injury accident, if, if, if there's an accident on the roadway, not even an injury accident, they need to be tested.
But anyway, that's getting, Aaron, that's getting a little off the ginn-
Yeah, I, I understand, it's just something we need to approach at some point, so.
We can do that in our site.
We can do that in our site.
Okay.
But-
Parker Perry?
Yes.
Sandra Sacre?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item number ten, excuse me, will be discussed, consider accepting plain surveying of right of way, staking on P V road, a chalk domination. I guess that would be you, Sandra.
Yes, it's basically this proposal, um, to furnish labor and equipment necessary to complete the scope, which requests an estimate that this is over, uh, what they had estimated, because it's some land, um, that they were surveying. So basically, that's what that is for P V road. Can I make a motion?
Oh, in favor.
Sandra Sacre? Clark Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it's, it's signed, she just told me that's signed. Okay, item number eleven will be discussed, consider to approve slash not approve civil engineering services for additional service. P V road, Walter P Moore, proposal, P fifteen days, seventeen ninety five.
And this is on the same road, basically, for the, for, um, to have the services on that road to finish.
And who, who bears the cost of that?
Uh, chalk domination.
Chalk domination.
They're gonna black top it, this is just to finish it up, they should be right at ninety percent.
You make that motion on number eleven?
I make a motion on number eleven.
I'll second it.
Same logic.
Yes.
Paul Story?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number twelve, it will be discussed, consider signing a resolution for renewal of Vibe Broadband, did you get a chance to check on that?
Oh, yes, well, basically, what this Vibe is, is, uh, liability for ten years to, to their services. Basically, it's just for them to come on the property and fix anything or anything. Vibe is the only one in the courthouse, it's the DA's office, the V I P does the rest of the courthouse. So that is two different companies. And so, anyway, um, I've talked to him and asked him why ten years, and he said usually they go fifteen to thirty, so, um.
But this is just gives them the right to come on the courthouse property.
For liability uses, yes. That's it. I make a motion on number twelve.
Oh, in favor.
Yes.
Parker Perry?
Yes.
Paul Story?
Yes. Item number thirteen will be signed, appropriation transfers, appropriation check, receiving POs.
Do you, y'all have any metal for that, for the doors and sleeves? Do y'all have any for the cell doors?
Yeah, you just gonna get rigged to dimensions.
Katrina got, she not get that, she's got it measured.
We talked about it last week, she's gonna get rigged to dimensions, and then Rick's gonna give me that metal and weld it.
See what they are, not getting cut.
Nah, I'll send doors up here and weld it, I'll send y'all to weld it, yeah, and that, yeah. That won't be a problem. Thank you, Lance, great paint there, the painting?
It's the same way it is.
Okay.
Well, it's not up there.
That's fine, I just-
Yeah, we got gray paint, like we did the doors, we can throw some gray paint on it.
That's fine, I'm proud. Yes, my world when I met your kinfolk, it's over Chicago.
My grandma.
Seemed like a nice lady, well, I didn't talk to her that long, seemed like a nice lady. Well, I just talked to her about five minutes.
She's unique.
Yes, she's, she's a nice lady. She, she was high on the town. No, she ain't, she don't look like it.
She's full blood Mexican. Full blood Hispanic, she, um, came over, they, they moved to Phoenix when she was about twelve, married my grandpa when she was sixteen. And then they moved up, they moved to Chicago, Phoenix, yeah, she's, she's blonde haired Mexican.
How long, she, yes, she essentially lost her husband.
He died four years ago.
Yeah, believe that what she said.
She, yeah, or my mom, my mom died, but my mom actually, my other dad, she works the gym, always, she's been here for ten years. You couldn't tell that, Paul? Is she a full blood Mexican?
No, I couldn't, no, but Tim, like I said, I just saw her for a couple minutes, I didn't.
If she gets, if she gets, if she gets talking too fast, she'll, she'll go from English to Spanish on the go out. If she gets, if she gets to talking, she'll, she'll switch.
Yeah. But if I see her again, I'll ask you more questions than I do.
Hey, you can ask her.
I doubt if I ever see her again, that's a act, freak accident, I'm running, I'm sorry. I forgot that we've got on the conversation, just talking about moving. Oh, where's your color? I was worried that, uh, yes, I get on it, she, uh, I forgot I even got to talk to her, she said something about without it, so I gotta-
I know you always run the shopping home deal at Christmas time and stuff.
Yeah, so he caused a lot of trouble over there, we put up with it.
Shaw down our sale stacks for some reason, I don't know if the online shopping is part of it.
You know, that Casey, that's a nice store over there.
The day inside. Start charging.
You been in one team?
Yeah, it's sales.
They're nice, they're nice stores.
Yeah, but I said this, the way we do it.
But the one I've been in was nice, and I could have liked that.
I'll pay another nice episode today.
So we do get some revenue on free online shopping?
It's big.
Some of our big stores.
Address?
When you come in this zip code? He'd ask you, uh, Campbell versus.
Eleven full time.
There's fourteen people. I don't have an order on- I don't have an order on mine, so I don't know, I just wondered, I knew us, a lot of people's going.
Then you'll know. They started.
Did, that's the biggest one, them and Walmart, I guess. Walmart and Amazon's probably two biggest ones.
Walmart's trying to cut, Amazon.
Walmart's up there, we'll sell.
They're, they're trying to get into Amazon's market.
Yeah, but they, uh. So assistant D A on D A.
They got into their market.
Will they hire somebody?
It's gonna be Christina, I know she'll be here every day, starting on that whole one. They did hire another part time V A and a counselor, Max Moss, who works full time in, or full time accountants.
Well, I think he might appear being. I'm, I'm glad because, I mean, it's gonna help, thank you, a lot.
Of course, the party's supposed to be, and then walk in and stay in this little hatch in there, and they would bring all your merchandise. They do that at Sam's, because I know somebody that did that, um, this past weekend, just, they just shopping, sent them a shopping list, and when they got there, they could take it up.
Yeah, all right there.
That's part I hate, walking around in there. Sue ain't no bad shopper, I mean, she usually goes in.
Two and a half inches?
She wants to get out, Lord, I'm.
She had her own down.
It's got a lot of. Extra light on his leg.
Core range will be thinking that they can't, there's four, four doors.
That's true.
And a core range is thinking that they can't get behind it, they just try.
They have a pretty good device.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, you keep leaving the pipe rings up there for him to get a hold of.
Ain't had no pipe ring.
We don't have intel as.
I've got the, the, the dimensions for those cell doors, put bean holes in them, and a couple of them.
That's all that's story.
We need to lock something down, we can lock them down and still be able to access them. The problem that we have is they've put books and stuff between those doors, and they've got those hinges all out of whack. Where, you've been hearing, some, some doors are that far off from locking, you shut them, you have to lift up on them, but they've got the hinges and all, I don't know how they've done it. Katrina said they used to put books in there, and they put enough books, and you go slam it, it just works and hinges right in. I don't know what we do to fix that. But I will tell you this, okay, food vendor from, our new food company, Performance Foods, came in, and we've had other folks come in that's transported inmates, and they say, y'all's young, man, it's, it's, it's nice. I said, no, we just keep it clean, but it's, it's nice to have coffee, it's for Katrina, they call, that's what state of the jail. Do you see the, you been there since we painted the yellow line before?
You, you remember, I got my own deal at place, I knew. Well, we owe more money on that, we do anything, so we ought to keep it up.
It's rough.
Do you sign this one?
Yeah, I see.
I need six hundred thousand dollars worth of gross revenue sales in the county.
Per year, per month? Per month. It's a lot. Over there right now, three fifty to four hundred.
Well, it's taking twelve thousand over the half cent sales tax.
That's what we did out there.
Yeah.
That's two percent, so we know two percent.
He had called, he had told me yet, I called, talked to him, and he said he'd be back for me the day he comes, check, inter up supplier, make sure.
I want to make one more, another question right now, if that same guy came right here, he, he'll know what, where else I need, I need over this little bit of phone, so, that's, that works out there.
You get that door out here sometime, anger out, come help or whatever. Or I can get it.
My daughter isn't there, every day, so.
You get all the help you want, whenever you're, you're gonna do it, trustee, I'll get a friend, I, I've got something at the yard, and I was putting on truck brakes, and then shovel it right off in, because if you do it any other way, it's gonna make it mess.
I just think we need a, you're gonna put down a little tug?
I just put it on one time, and when it's back right down to it, and then shovel it right off the truck, put it right on there, not spill it over, pile it, or make a mess, clean it.
What's good for you?
Anytime you tell me.
Let me give it air, and see what his schedule is this thing.
I don't know if it'll rain, but we're probably gonna get in the rainy season later.
You can wait it back down, it wants to dry.
Or that may, maybe get it like A S A P, because they don't make it, they get too wet. They're not gonna make one, he's just gonna back up there too.
Back right up to it, you'll have to get another one, just a fuel bar down.
I'll get my air, I'll just schedule, because I've got something else on me this week.
Or if you've got. Back door down off the barn, some, what you do, bring it up, or file it, and then, hit the stop on that area, and then you stick it in here. Or if you've got somebody viable, let's say, let's say everybody, we get the load is on, it's on, anytime you get ready.
What do you need?
We'll pass all of the rest that we're.
Say, I'm gonna pay, you gotta work some yard a lot higher, I think we probably pay them now that, we probably have to pay them now that, same.
Okay, but he said he'd give us next one.
Right, I did say, I didn't want to spend ten thousand, try to save eight. I didn't know what he charged.
Send that to him today.
Is that the code asset twenty two? I started, I started right, I did twenty. Yeah, I, I need a run, but I started, yeah. That's a little cheaper than some, I mean, what? I know the electric bill always runs thirty two, thirty five hundred, it's on a, it's on a winner.
We're doing nothing, he's the rest, if I let you get the gentleman's a gas.
Yeah, same, that's it.
Yes, this is my, is that what, I didn't know if it was wrong. I will not forget, L two mention, the signing lady will be here Thursday morning, walk with Tina. Tina Oaks, assign each oak on the purple hills. I'm gonna have Leon walk with him. Oh, that's that too?
It had paper for that, but it didn't.
I just thought the paper, that was only made for this one.
Cause I already paid. Clark, and Sam, I want to thank y'all for co-stopping that late, you know, for my funeral. Yeah, well, I couldn't, yeah, I, I just, I'd rather been here, been at his funeral at times, but I appreciate you doing it. I didn't know it, but he, he was, uh, wanted to go to crack to get all this started over here. On the cause, was he? Yeah, he's a very intelligent person, he, he done. Seven five, but he, he lived like he wanted to live, and he took no advice from no doctor, he did nothing they told him to do. That's why I'm, I'm gonna be around with it, it's over, it's over. And that's exactly what he did, he took no offense, and no offense.
How can we else watch on me?
Well, I already said it.
I'm almost done.
I'm not, I'm not in a hurry. They hit Carol, I didn't think it was for her.
What was her name?
Carol Jeffrey, sorry, he took this job in early, he went to con, you know, he was a contractor, he helped the elements hospitals, and he was standing for the MS, he went doing that, Carol went to run MS. He liked doing that, Carol, running MS.
Done your chipping yet, Paul?
Well, not yet.
I'm doing Perry Road today, starting on the edge.
Have you done any?
No. We're not gonna be able to get that chipper through that, I'm gonna have to go around. I don't just want to go through across that. I'm gonna cross that Friday, Saturday, and I thought, I just don't think that thing's gonna go through. Have to take it around.
It's not, there, there's not much over twelve foot clearance there. I mean, it's inches.
He rode that thing. It rode fast, and you think, too. I hear, I'm gonna make a motion on item number thirteen.
Second.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Sanders Lafferty. Yes.
Yes.
And item number fourteen is to adjourn, we need a motion on that.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion by Clark, second by Sanders.
Parton Ferry.
Yeah.
Sanders Lafferty. Yes.
Yes.